We are back in session. The next agenda item is going to be an update from Coastal Protection Engineering with our coastal engineer, a good friend of the town, Ken Wilson. Welcome, Ken. How are you today?
Doing well. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can. Very loud and clear.
Great, great. I also have Adam Priest, the project engineer with us today. He'll be listening and I'll give most of the presentation, but if we get any difficult questions, we'll kick them to Adam.
Good morning, everyone. Hope you're doing well.
Welcome, Adam.
All right. Can you guys see that first slide pretty well?
Yes.
All right, great. Well, we'll get started. Well, it's great to be able to brief you guys today. You know, it's unfortunate, the circumstances. We'd love to be up there. We always like to get up there from Wilmington. Probably about the same weather wise today. Maybe a little colder, but yeah, we want to get through a pretty good update on the beach management program. Screen to work here. So a little bit of a background, just on what we'd like to go through with you today. Kind of set the table, just some general background on the project. Make sure everybody's everybody's coming at this from the same level. Now, you guys have Drew there, new town manager. Congratulations, Drew. We corresponded a little bit via email, but got a great team there to work with. And then we'll talk a little bit about the annual monitoring analysis, that monitoring that we do of the whole entire beach every year. Just kind of give you the high points of the results there. And then we want to talk a little bit about some discussions we've been having internally about the project volumes for the upcoming 2022 project. This kind of builds off of some of the discussion that we had at your October 2020 council meeting last year when we gave you a short briefing on the monitoring results from last year. And then we'll give you a little bit of an update on where we stand with the 2022 project. As far as the design and the permitting of that project. We'll talk a little bit about the UAS monitoring program that we've been working with Christian and Sandy on. And then we'll talk a little bit about schedule and moving forward and next step sort of thing. And we're happy to field questions, you know, as we go or, you know, at the end, whatever. I just don't want you guys to lose your train of thought. If there's something pressing, feel free to chime in. So just kind of setting the table here as far as the beach management program. The goal, which comes right out of the maintenance plan and some of our original documents that we developed for the engineering study. The goal of the project is really to establish this long-term program to sustain the beaches and support a significant portion of the local economy and maintain the tax base of the town. Okay, so that's always kind of our point of focus, looking at a long-term program that's key to sustain the beaches. You know, that support this economic engine. Obviously, in 2017, we had the construction of the initial project. That project was about 1.6 miles long. Basically, the area that was identified as having high vulnerability structures, oceanfront structures that needed some mitigation to keep up with erosion and to provide some long-term storm damage reduction. And so after the project went into place, actually before the project went into play, we started monitoring the entire town. But since the project has been in place, every year we conduct an annual monitoring, beach monitoring of the town's oceanfront. That's really to serve two purposes. One is to assess the performance of the beach fill project that was put in in 2017. And the other purpose is really to track the overall health of the beach along the entire town. Make sure that we're keeping up with any sort of changes in the trends, whether they be gains or losses in the volume of sand that's out there on the beach. We want to keep up with that. Not only inside the project, but outside the project area as well. So throughout the discussion today, we'll be referring back to a couple of different areas. So on this map here, the main placement area, which is the project, the project area in the center of this map. Essentially, we're talking about from Skimmer Way at the south end of, south end of Sanderling, all the way down to the northern boundary of the Corps of Engineers Field Research Facility. That's the project area. And then we also talk about outside the project area, some different areas that we monitor. The north monitoring area, which is simply from that northern project limit at Skimmer Way up to the north end of the town. And then the south monitoring area, which would be from the northern field research facility boundary all the way to the southern boundary with southern shores. Right? So just some general evaluation. These are a couple of photos that we had in our program from last year. We had shown this January 24th photo from the FRF's Argus camera, that camera that they've got constantly taking photos. It's pretty good for capturing what's going on in the surf and, you know, how rough things are out there, how calm things are out there. But we've managed to grab a couple of different photos, just showing kind of year-to-year change. And this is kind of an oversimplification, but here we've got January 24th, almost two years ago. We can see all three of the rows of sand fencing down here on the southern end of the project. Obviously, where that sand fencing ends is the northern boundary of the field research facility. This is a photo that we showed last year, which is pretty much to the day of today, February 17th, 2020. Here, we still had two rows of sand fencing down here on the south end. And then this is a screen grab of what the conditions looked like yesterday when we pulled up the camera and did that grab. Obviously, we still have that top row of sand fence, but we can see some scarping, especially along that south end. And these, the series of pictures just kind of does a pretty good job of capturing some of that erosion that we've seen down at the south end of the project. So the annual monitoring analysis, you know, this is just kind of an overview of what is in that annual report that we provide. So the different data sets that we're dealing with, we've got our beach profile surveys. The very first set of data that our firm collected was back in September 2013. So that's kind of our baseline, especially for the area north and south of the project. That's our baseline. We've got the first survey that was conducted after the project was completed, which was done in December 2017. So for the project area, that's really our baseline survey. And then in this particular analysis, we're looking at also the May 2019 data and the June 2020 data, which basically shows what's occurred over the last, you know, 12, 13 month period in the monitoring cycle. You know, we'll be repeating this survey coming up here probably in late April or early May of 2021. And we'll be able to update these results. As far as the data, as some of you are aware, we also have a 2018 data set. It's just not something that we specifically refer to a lot in the annual monitoring analysis. We also have a data set that's from Post Dorian that was collected, I believe, in December of 2019. So a couple of other data sets in there as well. So there's 34 of these beach profiles along the entire Duck Oceanfront that are monitored each time we go out there. The project area, again, we're looking at December 2017 to June 2020, so about 30 months of data. And then the shoreline change analysis, I'll show you a figure that explains this a little bit better. But just a point of clarity, when we talk about the change in the shoreline, we're talking about the the plus six-foot contour out there on the beach. And I'll show you a graphic here in just a second to illustrate that. And then for volume change analysis, the two things to keep in mind are, for the project area, again, I mentioned the baseline is basically that December 2017 survey. So for the project area, we're looking at December 2017 through wherever the most recent survey is, which for today's purposes is that June 2020 survey. We also look at what's going on in the last, the last cycle of monitoring, so the May 2019 to June 2020 surveys as well. For outside the project areas, as I just mentioned, we want to go back and look at trends, long-term trends, all the way back to September 2013. So we have values for 2013 to 2020. We also have values that we can kind of compare what the areas outside the project have done during that same frame of reference from December 2017 to June 2020. And then again, we want to look at the most recent trends over the past cycle of monitoring. So those are the, those are the types of numbers that I want to talk to you about in these next couple of slides. Just, I know you all have seen this a number of times, but in terms of when we talk about shoreline change, what we're looking at is sort of a linear measurement of distance from one survey to another. So for instance, on this particular graphic that we use an example, we were using the mean, mean-low water contour at 1.2 feet NAVD. So on this blue profile, this is one set of data. We can identify where the cross-section intersects the mean-high-water line at some particular elevation. As I just mentioned, for your project, we actually monitor this at the plus-six-foot contour. So whatever that elevation is, we find it on one set of data. We find that location on another set of data, and we simply measure the distance between that. If it's, if it's a distance that's been measured over the course of one year, that's essentially your rate. If that distance has been measured over the course of five years, we would simply divide that, that distance by five and come up with an annualized rate. The difference between shoreline change and volume change is shown here in this slide. Again, the volume change is, is the area between these two sets of data. So on this particular profile, that's actually from down at Southern Shores, you can see a lot of erosion of this dune area. The bar has been eroded away, but there was kind of a big trough offshore that had filled in with some of that, that volume. And then there was some decrease in the amount of volume offshore. And so when we talk about volume change, we're basically looking at the net changes that occur along the entire profile. Some parts of the profile up on the dune, maybe you lost sand. But out here in deeper water, maybe you gained sand. We want to look at the net difference there. And that's when we talk about monitoring out to that depth of closure for your project, that's minus 24. We constantly want to measure all the way out to that depth of closure where very few changes occur from year to year. So that we're not just looking at the dry sand beach and saying, oh, well, we lost a lot of dry sand beach. We want to make sure that that volume truly is lost from the entire system. It's not that it's just sitting offshore. Okay? All right. So let's talk a little bit about some of the results of the monitoring analysis. So first, we want to talk a little bit about the project area, okay, that 1.6, 1.7 mile project area just north of the FRF. So between December 2017, our baseline survey, and the most recent survey we have, June 2020, we measured a loss of approximately 271,000 cubic yards. Okay? To put that in perspective, that's about 28% of what was measured in 2017. So essentially, 28% of what was placed out there during the project has, has been lost up until June 2020. Right? That obviously means 72% of the project is still in place. Between May 2019 and June 2020, the most recent monitoring cycle, we measured a loss of about 45,000 cubic yards within the project area. And the evaluation of the shoreline changes, yeah, there's a lot of detail in the report. If you guys get a chance to take a look at that. But a couple of points that I wanted to summarize here is that we discussed a little bit in that shoreline change section of the report that in the northern section of the project, the plus-six-foot contour that we just talked about, which is where the dry sand beach was constructed during the project. So that plus-six-foot contour is actually further landward now on the north end of the project than it was before the project started. But the mean-high-water contour, which is down around where, you know, where you, where, where you'd first start stepping into the water if you were walking down the slope of the beach. That mean-high-water contour is actually further seaward than it was before the project. And when you think about that, that, you know, the upper part of the beach has kind of moved back a little bit. The lower part of the beach has moved out a little bit. Essentially, what we're saying is the slope of the beach is flatter now than it was prior to the project being constructed. We can look at a bunch of different measurements and computations and kind of see that in the data. But this is kind of an interesting way of illustrating that, those two contours sort of spreading out and the slope of the beach flattening over time. We see a little more flattening of that beach on the north end of the project than we do on the south end of the project. And as we started thinking about that over the last several months, we remember that the, the, the project was actually built in two different ways. So the project was built with, with two different hopper dredges that were working in tandem on the north side of the project. And those upper dredges were running back and forth to the borrow site that was directly offshore the town of Duck. And we knew ahead of time that that material was finer grain than the material in the larger borrow site that's down there off of Killable Hills. And so they, as they were going back and forth, back and forth, we took beach samples and we could actually see that the grain size of the sand that was being placed on that beach was a little finer than the material that's placed on the south end. But to compensate for that, we required the dredge contractor to place a higher density of sand, more sand, more volume of sand on that northern section that was built with those two hopper dredges in tandem. And so we're actually seeing a little bit of that as we, as we dig deep into this data that, you know, in general, the beach is a little bit, it has a little bit flatter slope than the pre-project beach had. We can see that in some of the grain sizes. Like I said, there's a pretty good discussion on that in the report. As we move up to the north project area, so north of the project area, again, we're talking about everything north of Skimmer Way or the southern end of Sanderling. So going all the way back to September 2013 to June 2020, the largest set of data that we have, the average volumetric gain that we see along the entire stretch north of the project is about 1.2 cubic yards per foot per year. So we're gaining material at sort of a modest rate of about 1.2 cubic yards per foot per year. When we look at what has happened since the project went in, that second bullet, see that there's actually been an increase in that rate of gain of about 8.3 cubic yards per foot per year since the project was constructed. Right? And then we show that between May 2019 and June 2020, there was actually the trend over that last 15-month period was actually even higher. We were looking at a gain of about 16.8 cubic yards per foot per year. Again, these are averages throughout the whole area. We do see some variability when we look at profile to profile, and there's a nice table in the report that shows you could look at any individual profile. If your house was closer to one than, than another, you kind of see what that profile is doing in relation to these averages. But one, one way we kind of looked at the data was that from Skimmer Way up to Martin Lane, which is about 4,000 feet, 4,000-foot stretch of beach, you see a gain over the last year of about 10.2 cubic yards per foot per year. And sometimes when we look at these projects, we do see spreading from the project area to the area directly north and directly south. And in this case, we're seeing a gain of material directly north of the project. But the reason we broke this up is to show that actually the northernmost part of the town from Martin Lane up to northern town boundary actually gained even more volume than the area directly adjacent to the project area. We've been sort of, you know, rattling our brains, thinking about different, you know, different things that could be going on to cause that. Say there probably isn't a silver bullet right now that we, that we would, that we would lean on. But one, one also interesting aspect is that we've, we have recently been awarded a contract for, with Currituck County. And so right now, we're, we're actually monitoring each summer their entire county shoreline that goes all the way up to the North Carolina-Virginia border and comes all the way down to the town of Duck's northern border. And so we did look at some data from 2019 to 2020 in that Pine Island development, essentially the northern three and a half miles just north of the town of Duck. And we actually saw some increases in losses in their beach over that period of time. And so I don't know if that directly correlates to some of the gains that we've seen here. Obviously, if sand can move south to north, we've also seen sand move north to south. So I'd say that those, that those, those numbers that we've measured over the last year don't necessarily dictate a trend. But they are some interesting numbers to keep an eye on. And in general, you know, what we like to see is that, you know, from September 2013 to June 2020, we're in a better place than we were to begin with in September 2013. And since the project has went in, we've seen even more gains there. So all of that is positive for sure. On the south end of the project, so now we're talking about from the field research facility, northern boundary, all the way to the town of Southern Shores. Same sort of pattern here. Prior to the project, we, we were looking at a volumetric gain a little higher than that northern section, about 3.1 cubic yards per foot per year. We haven't seen that much of a change since the project went in. Very modest change in the average gain. But again, we're gaining material south of the, the project area since the project went in. And then over the course of the last year, you know, we talked about a pretty, some pretty high gains that were measured up on the north side of town. We also see some pretty high gains measured on the south side of town as well. 11.8 cubic yards per foot. We divided this into three different sections. Here you got basically the FRF property. We were seeing a gain of around 11 cubic yards from the FRF property down to Four Seasons Lane. That rate over the last year was about the same, right around 11 cubic yards. And then at the, from Four Seasons Lane down to Southern Shores, we see that, that rate of gain increase a little bit. So again, just, just some different ways of looking at this data. One thing I wanted to kind of build off of in the southern end of the town, something that we've talked about, skip that real quick and come right back. Something that we've talked about in the past is these, these storm vulnerability S-Beach model, you know, model assessments that we've done over the years. The first one was done back in 2013. I think we updated that in 2014. And we looked at the, the original, the original storm vulnerability model was used to figure out exactly where the project should be constructed. And so we went back and updated that storm vulnerability study right before the project was constructed in May 2015. And we actually saw a gain of some of the, the number of vulnerable houses. Essentially, if you look at that first map that I showed with all the profiles, you can see the area between this profile and this profile represented on that map. And what we're saying is, these are essentially 1,000-foot sections. In these 1,000-foot sections, the condition in September 2013 said that there were three houses that the model showed as vulnerable in that area. In 2015, it showed that in that same stretch of beach, there were seven structures. But we redid that vulnerability assessment last year. You might remember, we talked about this last year. We had updated it since the project was constructed, and we saw that there was only one structure in this same section, just using this, this section as an example, that was shown as vulnerable through that, that assessment that we do with the S-Beach model. And so the reason that I bring this up, this year, we have not updated these results since last year. But we've, we, you know, there, there really no straw. I think there's one structure in the area north of the project that last year was shown as vulnerable. We know that we gained material over the last year, so the northern area isn't, doesn't seem to be an issue. But there were a couple of sections in the southern part of the project where we were starting to, to, to look at some vulnerable structures. My point by showing you this today is that we just talked about the gains that have been made in the south section of the project. So although we have not updated this analysis in 2020, we are showing that there have been, you know, essentially gains in this section of the beach. And, you know, you can sort of deduce that we don't have any more vulnerable structures than we did back in, in 2019, just, just looking at those trends. It is something, we haven't really spoken directly with staff about how frequently to update that vulnerability assessment. Maybe it's something we look at in 2021. Obviously, 2022 will be taking surveys right before the project is constructed. You know, it, it kind of, it kind of depends. Maybe, maybe the other thing to do would be if we, if we see changes in this section, once we get that 2021 data in-house and processed, perhaps if it show, if it's actually showing losses or a reversal in the trend in the south or in the north, we could always run that model again. It's a fairly straightforward exercise to try to update those numbers. One other figure that I want to show before we move on from the monitoring analysis results is this graphic that's in the report. It's, it's a, it's a pretty interesting graph once you wrap your head around it. Okay? So what we're talking about is the cumulative volume of material that has either been lost or gained in each of those three project areas that I just, that we've just been discussing. So basically, we start at zero. We're going to say this is our baseline point in 2013, that survey that I've been talking a lot about. And if we look at this green line, we would say that, okay, from 2013 to 2015, north of the project area, we actually saw some, some, some losses of sand. And so this is a cumulative measurement. Essentially, we're looking at about a loss of 300,000 cubic yards in this section between 2013 and 2015. And we see an increase. And then since this big jump here will be the project going in. But essentially, from that point on, the trend sort of goes up. So let's look at the project area first, because this is the most dramatic one. So we start in 2013, our baseline. Through the actual development of the, the project, you know, through those two years that we were, we were developing and doing the design for the project, the shoreline in the project area was actually fairly stable, even though you guys had lost a lot of sand leading up to 2013. A lot of vulnerable structures on the beach. The actual volume changes were fairly stable from 2013 to 2017. So in 2017, we have this big jump, which is the, the addition of the sand from the beach nourishment project. And then we look at these changes each time we went out and did a survey. So this is December 2017. This is the 2018 survey. This is the 2019 survey. This is the 2020 survey. And this point down here is the survey that we did after Hurricane Dorian. And so what I want to focus your attention on is, this is a pretty typical trend that we see after these projects go in. We see immediately after the project, you know, one rate of change. And then as the years go by and that project is in place, we see sort of a flattening of this, of this line, this line segment here, which shows that the rate of change is actually decreasing. So what I've put in here is this dotted line showing from 2019 to 2020. Again, the, the rate is decreasing over time. However, we do have this big loss and gain associated with Hurricane Dorian and the, and the survey that was done in December 2019. But this, this is an interesting, this is an interesting figure, and we'll continue to update this every year that we get data showing sort of that trend of cumulative volume change and how that rate is starting to stabilize over time. As we look down here at the southern and northern curves, you can again see right after the project, we saw a drop-off in the volume immediately after the project. But since the, the summer of 2018 surveys were conducted, we're seeing upward trip, upward trend in the volume in both the northern and southern area. And so wherever these curves are above the zero point, that, that simply means we're, we're that much better than we were at our starting point in September 2013 than we are at the last date on this curve. So.
Can I ask a quick question, Ken? This is Monica.
Sure.
Did you just take a data point on December 19th for the project area? I notice there aren't any dots on the purple and green lines.
Correct. That's a good observation. Yeah, when we, when we scoped out that survey for the, the Post, Post Dorian survey, because that was the only area that would have, you know, we were really looking at potential reimbursements through FEMA. We wanted to identify the volume losses in that section. So cut down some costs only survey in the project area. All right. So that's, that's pretty much all of the update we have on those, the annual monitoring surveys. I want to move on a little bit and start talking a little bit about the project volumes. So a bunch of numbers on the screen here, I want to explain to you. In our, in the beach maintenance plan that we developed right after the project was constructed, we, you know, actually, I'll show, show, show you those graphics here in a second. But you guys have seen the graphics of the, you know, the beach, beach nourishment, how it goes in, the equilibration, the difference between advanced fill and design fill. Well, the advanced fill, which is that sacrificial sand that's placed out in front of the beach to hold the line essentially in between maintenance cycles. We had calculated that in the, the town's beach maintenance plan to, to basically average a loss of about six cubic yards per foot per year. All right? And when you add that up over five years and multiply it by the length of the project, that means every five years, you would need about 254,000 cubic yards of sand to put back to keep up with the predicted background erosion. All right? Those erosion rates are based off of historic erosion rates. We also do some analysis to try to figure out when you build one of these projects and you artificially bump out the, the shape of a beach, mother nature's going to have a tendency of trying to smooth that bump in the shoreline out. So when you build a project, you actually get higher erosion rates because the, the natural forces are trying to, trying to flatten that beach back out to where it was prior to. So we know that we're going to lose more than just the background erosion. We try to figure that into our calculations, and we come up with this six cubic yards per foot per year. We also have this volume that during Dorian, we have doc, we documented with FEMA that there was a loss of 170,800 cubic yards. We're working through the process right now of getting, getting that funding obligated so that when we place that 170,800 cubic yards on the beach, the town can be reimbursed through FEMA for the, the placement of that particular part of the project. So when you add those two numbers up, you come up with a number of 424,800 cubic, 800 cubic yards. And we've provided these cost figures to the town. This is essentially the budget that, that, that you all are working on for the 2022 project. This would be just the This would be just the standard. If you were going through the five-year, um, cycle and we were, we were, um, you know, comfortable with the six cubic yards per foot, it would be about a five million dollar project. Um, the addition of the FEMA fund or the FEMA, the, the FEMA losses, uh, is another three million dollars. We get that number up to about eight million dollars. Um, for those of you that haven't seen it, this is that graphic, um, that I was just talking about. I think it, it, it really ties in well with the, the, the discussion that we're trying to have about volume and how these projects work. But essentially this is your pre-project condition. Um, just a schematic of a cross-section. When the project is originally constructed, um, you, you all can remember that, that we're around for the project, how wide that beach was directly after the dredgers, um, you know, moved down to Kitty Hawk and Kildalow Hills to build the project down there. Very wide beach there, uh, but it's, it's, it's almost, um, you know, artificially wide because the way that we construct this, this fill, we expect that a portion of that material is going to move off into the offshore area and help re-nourish the offshore portion of the profile, not just the dry sand beach where we are. Right. And so we've shown this graphic as well. This is that advanced fill that I was just talking about. So in our engineering analysis, we figure out, okay, in order to provide a certain level of protection for the houses that are on the beach or the infrastructure that's in place, we want a, a certain size dune, we want a certain size dry sand berm in front of that dune. And we want that, that designed beach to last, you know, in perpetuity essentially. But we know that as soon as the project is, is put out there, that sand losses will begin to occur. And so we put additional sacrificial sand in front of that designed beach in place to hold the line over the next five years or whatever the re-nourishment cycle is. Okay? And so after the five years, theoretically you're back to the designed beach. Your designed beach is intact and now it's time to re-nourish the beach. And you're only putting back that sacrificial sand to re-nourish the beach. And that's why a re-nourishment typically is a, is a, is, is much less volume involved in a, a re-nourishment than the initial construction where you have to build your entire design. Okay. So let's think about that. Now that we have that, that concept down, um, you know, really well, let's think about that in terms of the actual measurements that we've made since the project was constructed. So again, this is all based on the twenty twenty data that was, that was taken in the summer of twenty twenty. At that point in time, we actually showed that the designed beach, the one that we want to remain in place in perpetuity. If we just look at that designed beach, there's actually a loss of about eighty seven thousand cubic yards of material from that beach. And if you if you guys have, you know, walked the south end of the project, you know that the toe of that dune has been scarped out. Um, you can kind of, kind of visualize, you know, as the bottom of that, that dune, which is part of the design gets scarped away, uh, eroded away, that's part of the loss of the actual design beach that, that we want to remain in place. All right. So the rate of loss that we've seen from the project, um, that, that we just talked about with the monitoring, um, this rate of change is essentially from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. Um, we cut out the twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen rate, um, because it was a little bit higher and, and this, we expect, we expect that that trend will continue as we get further and further into the cycle, that those volume change rates will come down a little bit. So we've, we've looked at the rate of change from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. That rate of change is eleven cubic yards per foot. So think of that in terms of the six cubic yards per foot per year that we plan for in terms of that advanced fill that we just showed. Okay. So we're losing sand faster than, than that, than, than that advanced fill was designed for. So if we, if we think in terms of, all right, well, this data is based on twenty twenty data, we still have two years to go before we build the project. So we're going to say we want advanced fill losses at this, at, at this rate, two years to get to the project plus five years of, of advanced fill during the project. It gives us seven years. What would it take to put enough sand on the beach on the twenty twenty condition to last seven years? That total would be six hundred and forty two thousand cubic yards. So if we add up this number, the amount that we expect to, to lose over the seven years from twenty twenty and this number, which is the material that we actually lost from the design, we get the total volume of around seven hundred and thirty thousand cubic yards. So that's an increase of about three hundred and four thousand cubic yards compared to those numbers that I just showed you on that previous spreadsheet that had the volumes with what was in the beach maintenance plan and what was in the, um, wh- what we expect to be reimbursed for through FEMA. That's this number. The number that we just walked through is, is three hundred, essentially three hundred thousand cubic yards more. If we put that in terms of dollars, that's an increase in, of, of project costs of about three point four million dollars, three point three six million dollars. Okay? So a couple of caveats that we want to think about as we, as we, as those numbers roll around in the back of our heads. The erosion rate, as we mentioned, as I showed on that curve where we were looking at the slope of that blue line, the erosion rates are expected to decrease over time. That would be, uh, in agreement with, with most projects that are constructed. Um, and, and even, even beyond this original, um, this original project going in, a lot of times as, you know, there, there's such an influx of sand when you first build these projects that there's a lot of, there's a lot of equilibration. We talked about this idea of sand moving offshore, but essentially you start from a, a profile that's very much sand starved. Um, you know, a lot of places you've, you've had different, um, you know, techniques that owners and towns have used, whether it's sandbags or whatever, to try to hold that line once erosion starts getting worse and worse. And you see a steepening of the dune and scarfing and steepening of the beach. And then when you put that beach back in, it becomes a little bit more like a natural beach, but it hasn't been a natural beach in some time. And so there, there are some changes that occur over time that we see when, you know, over, over repeated re-nourishment and re-nourishment, re-nourishment intervals, the further you get into your program, um, the more you tend to decrease those erosion rates over time. So we expect the erosion rate between now and the project construction to go down. We also would expect that the, the erosion rate that we would see in the future would be less. Um, but right now we're still looking at that eleven cubic yards per foot per year, because that's the best number that we have to deal with, the most conservative number. We're also, um, something that I'll talk about in a few minutes. We're also working on some numerical modeling, um, that's focused on improving the project performance and slowing diffusion losses. So um, something that many of you are very aware, well aware of, when these projects go in, you tend to try to taper the ends of these projects, um, you know, so that, so that you can slow the loss of volume. Remember I, I mentioned when you build one of these projects up and you create this artificial bump in the shoreline, nature has a tendency of wanting to smooth that out. Well, if you can put these tapers on either side of the project, it slows the loss of that volume off of the project. Uh, unfortunately, because our project runs right up against the field research facility, they did not want sand placed on their property. We had to do something a little different on the south end of the project and, and essentially we, we made the southern end of the project slightly, slightly wider, uh, and allowed a, a taper to form naturally over time. But we're still seeing some pretty high losses off of that south end. And that's, you know, that's really shown very simplified by those photos that I showed at the very, very beginning of my presentation, looking at the rows of sand fence on that south end. Um, but we are looking at, at some engineering, uh, modifications to try to slow the losses of volume. So again, caveats of when we look at putting that much more material on the beach, we are looking at ways of slowing that down in term, i- in terms of the permitting volumes. Right now we're moving forward with permitting this twenty twenty two project. We have included in the permit application for the town of Duck, um, volumes in excess of anything that we've talked about today. So the town has some flexibility in how much volume they want to place out there to, 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 to try to deal with this, this, this loss and, you know, modifications in, in how the project will be constructed. Um, and the other thing that, that I'd suggest is that we, we will be taking new surveys in probably, like I said, April or May of twenty twenty one. We, once we get that data in hand, we can update that analysis and say, okay, well, we, we have that eleven cubic yards per linear foot per year rate from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. If we go from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one, does that decrease? And if it does, well, then we can kind of reshuffle the deck and take another look at that seven hundred and twenty nine thousand cubic yards or that increase in three hundred thousand cubic yards. Maybe that number comes down a little bit once we get the twenty twenty one data in, in hand. Right? Um, all right. So I want to, now I want to jump. We've, we've been talking about sort of the volume that's involved in this twenty twenty two project. Um, I want to kind of give you an update, an overview of, you know, permitting, engineering, design of where we are in the process for planning this twenty twenty two project design uh, or the, this, this project. So the first thing that I want to talk about is, um, is sand resources. So this map here, um, we show a couple of different areas. These green areas are areas that were investigated during um, the twenty fourteen offshore sand resource investigation. We were also investigating this borrow area A, but this is more of the final shape of what we ended up permitting for borrow area A. So you can see in reference to the town of Kildalow Hills, this is the boundary, the town of Kildalow Hills and Nags Head. The borrower is located pretty much right off of the southern boundary of Kildalow Hills. There's, there is enough volume of sand in borrow area A to build all of these projects that you see on this map. So this would be the town of Ducks project, but we're also involved with Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk and Kildalow Hills. They're looking at constructing projects in cooperation with Duck in twenty twenty two. There is enough volume of sand in this borrow site to build the projects for all four of the towns, but one of the things that we wanted to look at was are there additional borrow sites that might be located closer to the town of Duck and closer to the town of Southern Shores that might decrease the cost um, to construct those projects? Obviously the distance that you have to haul the sand is a big factor in the cost of beach projects. Um, area C, there was a borrow site that was designed inside of area C, and that was that area that I talked about earlier when I said that the, the sand on the northern side of the town of Duck project is a little finer. It came out of a borrow area that was just a subsection of this large green area investigation area. But when we started planning for the twenty twenty two project, we conducted a desktop study with some of our colleagues over at, at, at Aptum, uh, the, the firm that, that we got, that we tran- transferred over to recently. Uh, but we were working with some of the folks at Aptum to kind of do this, this, uh, desktop study and we identified this reconnaissance area that we felt based on, um, some historic data, uh, vibra cores, um, some seismic data and a lot of bathymetry data, basically the elevations of the, the, the seafloor depths in this section. That there could be some features that were similar to what we eventually designated as borrow area C up in this section. And so we decided that in, in cooperation with the four towns, we would go in and conduct a reconnaissance survey in this area to figure out if there were good, you know, suitable sand sources in this area. And if there were, we were set up to transition into a design level survey so that we could end up with a refined borrow site, you know, whether it has this shape or whatever the shape would be inside of this investigation area. So the reconnaissance survey was done back in October twenty twenty. And this is an image just showing the bathymetric data of, of what was collected during that, that, that survey. As they were going over these high points here, these are bathymetric highs. So, you know, these, these elevations are shallower than the, than the cold colors, the bluer colors. But as we went over these, these features, these are the features that we had identified during the desktop study. As we went out there and surveyed, clearly those features were real. We had sub bottom data that showed, you know, the different sediment layers that were contained in these, in these shoals out there. And so things were looking fairly promising that we might be able to develop a borrow area. But when we took the vibra cores in these, these deposits out here, the vibra cores showed sediment that was finer than what we were looking for. Uh, a higher concentration of fine grain materials, I think mud. And the material was a lot darker than the native sand on any of the, the, the Deer County beaches. And so we, we ran some quick analysis. We actually brought some samples. The boat had gone into Norfolk for a couple of weather days. We brought some of those samples down to, down to Wilmington and processed those samples and, and, you know, actually had hard numbers to look at. And the grain size was in fact a lot finer than what we would like to place on those beaches. And the color, even in the best areas, was a lot darker than, than what we would like to do. So we talked to, you know, the managers at each of the different town at that point in time. And, uh, you know, decision was made to, to cut the investigation off at that point in time. We did have that reconnaissance data. Um, but as far as taking it all the way to the next step of trying to develop borrow areas, we, we called off that second segment of the, the sand search. So it's kind of an update on, on some services that, you know, we did, we did provide, um, part of last year's contract. Um, there is some, you know, some additional data out here, but it does look like these shoals in here um, are a little bit finer and a little bit darker than, than what we might want to use for beach sand. Um, one thing that I didn't mention is that in, in addition to surveying this area, we also ran a couple of reconnaissance lines outside of borrow area A to identify and see if we could, we could develop this borrower even further to the north in future years. And it does look like there, there's some potential to in, increase the size of borrow area A. There's also the potential of going a little bit deeper than the existing cuts in borrow area A. Um, and so we, we've got sort of a finite resource out there, but we are, and, and we've got enough of a resource to build the twenty twenty two project, but always in the back of our mind, we're thinking about in terms of in the future, you know, where, where future sand resource is going to come from. So uh, there is some work to be done there. I did mention that we're working with town of Currituck right now. Their, their assessment right now is really just looking at trends in the shoreline. There isn't really a discussion about actually moving forward into beach nourishment um, at this point in time, but you know, that could be something to be considered as well. If, if the town of Currituck takes a more, um, aggressive approach at looking for, uh, looking at beach nourishment, they're going to need sand resources as well. And, and perhaps there are things north of the town of Duck haven't been fully investigated yet.
Ken, could I ask about area C again? Just so I understand, uh, you mentioned that the sand was finer, we had to put more on there, uh, use more or, you know, add to it, compensate, I guess, is the word I'm looking for because of fine sand. Are you, what is the status of area C as far as the project and?
So, yeah, good, good question. Area C, um, I think there was like one point, uh, maybe there was a little over two million cubic yards that was in our RC, but the, the amount of material that they took out of borrow area C during the last project, it's probably not in a, in a, in a position for them to go back and economically mine any more sand out of our area C. So in essence, bar area C has been exhausted. We probably won't, won't include that in the twenty twenty two project as an option. All right. Um, so we talked a little bit about the sand. Uh, let's talk a little bit about the permitting process for the twenty twenty two project. Um, at this point in time, the, there are two permits that you all need. One is a KMA major permit. One is a Corps of Engineers individual permit, and then we also need to obtain a Boam lease, um, which is something that's collectively done through Deer County. Uh, there'll be one lease issued to Deer County for all of the projects. Um, but the, the, as far as the town of Duck is concerned, the KMA major permit application, the final permit has been submitted. Um, I don't know if we've got a confirmation from DCM yet. We, there has been a lot of back and forth on, on, you know, going from draft permit application to final permit application. I don't know if we have a, 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 an acceptance that they have reviewed it and that it is, that it is a complete permit application, but essentially we've got a, a, a submitted permit application February twenty twenty one, which starts a, a potential one hundred and fifty day time clock, um, to, to review and approve the permit for, um, for the state. The Corps of Engineers individual permit application, uh, and the, and the, uh, environmental assessment, the EA that we're working on. Um, we have submitted, uh, a draft of that EA to both the Corps of Engineers and Boam. I've gotten some comments back from Boam, but before we submit the final, we need all four of the major permit applications in for the four towns. Um, I think we have, we, I know we formally submitted the town of Ducks. I believe yesterday we formally submitted the town of Kildalow Hills. We're getting pretty close on Kitty Hawk and hopefully by the end of next week, um, we will have submitted, uh, the town of Southern Shores as well. So we're getting close to being able to submit all of this to the Corps of Engineers as well. Um, in terms of their process, it's a little faster. I think it's a hundred and thirty five days, but uh, feel pretty confident that we're still within the window of when we want permits in hand uh, for the federal process. Um, there's also a, a, something called an essential fish habitat report, that it's something that, that part of NOAA looks at to assess uh, impacts on fisheries. That document is more or less drafted, um, is ready to go out to comment for the Corps and Boam. But again, we're waiting on, um, this step to be completed before we submit that. And then we're actively working on the Boam lease application as well, um, which is a, a fairly straightforward process. There's a lot of information that was, that was used in the last project that, that will go into that application. One other bullet that I put on this slide, just to remind me, uh, to mention it, um, we talked about that the potential of placing material to be reimbursed by FEMA. Uh, FEMA themselves actually has to go through their own. The potential of placing material to be reimbursed by FEMA. Uh, FEMA themselves actually has to go through their own. Environmental clearance process, their NIPA process. And so essentially what they needed to do was consult with the U S Fish and Wildlife Services. And because there were a number of different FEMA projects throughout the state of North Carolina from Topsail Island, um, through Bog Banks, um, all the way up to Nags Head. Um, the Buxton Project, um, your project. FEMA decided to do a programmatic biological opinion that would cover them um for years to come for any projects in in this region. And so that took a little bit longer. They they were developing that back in August, but the process is more or less complete for the the. The FEMA coordination with U S Fish and Wildlife Services. Uh, Sandy and I have been tracking that pretty closely. Um, it looks like it looks like it's pretty much out of FEMA's environmental, um, you know, their environmental staff's um. Cue and is now more of into a a bureaucratic review. Um, so we're looking at a couple more months where we think before that the the actual, this is kind of the last step in the process before. You could you could say that the money has been obligated for the placement of the 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 volume that we documented that was attributed to Hurricane Dorian. Um, so it's kind of the last box to check, but we're we're getting very close on that. All right, uh, and then the final aspect that I want to provide you uh in terms of the updates on the two thousand and twenty-two project is some of the engineering that's been done. Um, we talked earlier, part of part of our contract was to update advanced fill um quantities and look at a advanced fill analysis. Obviously, we talked a lot about that earlier. Um, and looking at that eleven cubic yards per foot per year right now. We also during the project, I don't know if some of you may remember, but on on certain certain wave conditions, certain sea conditions. As I mentioned, when the project was constructed, that flat wide beach was constructed at elevation plus six. There were a couple of times during construction where high tide events, the water would actually run up over top of that berm. And um, you know, it didn't really pond a whole lot inside of the dune. Um, you know, the dune was high enough that as the tide fell. That water infiltrated down into the sand. It it eventually it didn't become a problem because the. The beach sort of, you know, equilibrates itself to to some condition that it that that that's more natural than that plus six. But we talked a little bit internally about should we build that that initial constructed berm higher? Uh, should we build it lower? Obviously, if you built it lower, there would be even more overtopping during construction. The problem you face if you build it higher is that, um, you know, there there typically there is some scarfing that occurs during certain wave conditions of that berm. And you guys probably can remember, you know, certain weeks out of the year after that first project was built that. You know, you walk out to the end of the dry sand beach and there was a two or three or four foot. Uh, escarpment there. You had to step down to get down to the waterline. And the higher you build that project up front. The higher that scarf may be, um, while the project is sort of e- equilibrating itself. And so. We went through a number of different analysis and and evaluations, and we ended up that, you know, we we felt comfortable keeping that firm height elevation at that plus six foot. Um, elevation, but, you know, we did want to kind of look into that and see if there was a way of improving that in the future. Uh, and then the 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 biggest part of what we're doing in terms of the engineering design right now is the beach fill beach fill performance evaluation. Guys may have heard us talk in the past about this, uh, reusing this this um coastal hy- hydraulic model. Uh, Del three D. It's a it's a numerical model developed by um institute over in the Netherlands, Delteres. Uh, actually, one of the principals of our our firm, Lindino Benedict, he he got his PhD working with those guys over there in Delteres and. Uh, our our group's probably been using this model longer than just about any other coastal engineering firm in the country. We've. I mean, we've been using it since back in the early two thousand, so a lot of experience with it, um, number of different projects in North Carolina. Uh, as well, but it's a really high powered, you know, state of the art model. Um, essentially, those photos that are shown down below is that the first step of the model is to set up this regional. Model that deals with just the waves and just the currents that are um that that are impacting the coast offshore. And so. This left hand side, I mean, the the this this is their grid of the model, essentially the domain of the model, and. This green line right here is the south end of Killable Hills. So we we, you know, we've included a good chunk of Nags Head in the model. Um, I believe that up in this section is a, well, this is the F R F, these two gauges here. So. The town of Duck would end here. We've got a fair amount of the town of Currituck County included in this wave domain as well. Uh, and so we calibrate that, make sure that we're dealing, we can, we can reproduce wave effects and current effects in the area. And then we go in and within the individual project areas, we create a new model. That's actually dealing with sediment transport that's occurring in there. So not only do we have wave interaction and and water level interaction. Uh, but there's a, there's a time series. This model makes all these calculations that it figures out where the sand would be, how much sand is moving. And each time it runs through one of these cycles, it updates, you know, what the actual bathymetry of the area looks like. And then it continues on that cycle. The cycle might represent, you know, one minute of time. Over the course of years. And so we've set this model up, the model is calibrated, and now we're starting to look at different alternatives and how. These alternatives perform in the model. Now. What one of the the caveats that we always get into when we start talking about numerical model is that numerical modeling is that, you know, we don't want to think of this in terms of like it's it's predicting the future. Um, we're talking about sediment, you know, sediment movement, sediment transport that that we believe will occur based on our model. Over the course of, you know, one year to five years through that 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 nourishment cycle. And so. The 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 physical dynamics of what's going on, physics of what are going on in that surf zone out here is. Is just as complicated as the physics that go into predicting the weather. And so. You wouldn't necessarily ask a weatherman to predict what would happen in the weather one year to five years out. You're not going to ask, you know, coastal engineer to predict exactly what's going to happen out here. One year to five years out because we don't know exactly what the wave climate is going to be. So you say, well, why are we spending this money? Why are we doing this? The the reason we do this is because we can compare. One alternative in the model to another alternative in the model and see which one looks like it would perform better. So it's more of a, it's more of a qualitative comparison, relative comparison rather than, you know, quantitative. Um, a quantitative analysis. So just something to consider as we're we're going through.
Ken, this is Don.
Yes.
Can you just explain what were the, I guess, for Lehman, what would the toe of the dune look like now? I mean, after you do the replenishment. I mean. We've got a lot of escarpment. We've got it cut into the dune pretty well. Do you just backfill that and bring the slope back down? Or what do you do with the toe of the dune?
Correct. So um, that's a great segment in into this 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 first alternative that I want to show. So what we're talking about. What we're talking about simulating in the model right now is a couple of different alternatives. So the first one that we want to simulate is. Going back to that four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred cubic yard volume that we talked about. Uh, in the beginning. So that's the FEMA losses and the expected losses at a rate of six cubic yards per foot per year. Adds up to four twenty-four eight hundred. What we would do, uh, Mr. Mayor would be, we would repair the portions of the dune. That are deficient in terms of what the original design was. So in some areas, that dune has actually built out quite a bit. Uh, think about it in terms of up on the north end. The dune is built out quite a bit. There's sand fencing, there's vegetation, but now we're starting to see some scarfing up on the north end of the project. Well, where that scarfing is occurring might still actually be. Seaward of where the dune design was. So the design dune that we show in that schematic may still be in place in parts of the project. But in areas where that design dune is not intact, we would reconstruct that portion of the dune. And that's basically what this red line is meant to show that. You know, i- i- it's just an illustration, but let's say half of the project, we need to increase the volume that's in the dune. Rebuild that that toe of dune, you know, reshape it to what the the design is. And then at that point in time, whatever the balance of this four hundred and twenty-four thousand cubic yards would be. We would spread it in the model. We would spread it evenly, simply building out like that plus six foot contour as far as we could with that with the slope that goes down. On the on the uh, on the profile. So that would be sort of a baseline analysis of how does that project perform? Just putting the four hundred and twenty-four thousand out there and. Reconstructing the dune in areas where it's deficient. The the second alternative would be. That that bump up of an a additional three hundred thousand cubic yards that we talked about because, you know, we've lost some volume out of the out of the design already, and we're looking at a rate of eleven cubic yards instead of six. That that would require another three hundred thousand. So the difference between this and this is simply to show an increase. Of the fill density through this section, but we would spread it evenly along the entire town. The other options that we want to look at are. If we were to overfill a central section of the project. Could we keep more of the sand within the limits of where the beach fill project has actually been constructed? So. If we place it, if we overfill the center section and then let the beach equilibrate, again, that that idea of when you build a bump in the shoreline. Major's going to have a tendency of trying to smooth it out. When it smoothes this bump out, does it keep more of the material inside of the project area than it would if we just. Fill the entire template the way that alternative two looks. And then another comparison that we want to do is. Take that same volume of sand and what would, you know, what would the difference be if we? If we uh overfill the southern half of the project as opposed to putting it in this in the south area. This probably isn't a recommended idea, but it will be nice to see the difference in how the how the system is functioning. Comparing this alternative to this alternative. If I I would say probably maybe maybe none of these four alternatives is ultimately what we recommend. Um, typically, the way that we do these modeling studies is that we we throw something out there. We see how the model reacts to it, and then we start. Tweaking things a little bit and and coming up with, you know, what might be our preferred alternative and then simulate that against some of these earlier simulations.
When do you have to make that? When do you have to make that decision?
Well, we're. We're probably, we probably have about two months right now where, um, you know, we we by April, we'd like to have, you know, results and make some recommendations. Um, we've got that built in the 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 last slide, kind of a next step summary slide. Um, but yeah, we we'll be looking at. Probably getting results of these uh, these first few simulations over the course of maybe the next two or three weeks. Um, and then, you know, discussing that with staff, um, thinking a little bit more about our recommendations in terms of, you know, another one or two alternatives to simulate. And then providing that, um, you know, to the town in a in a more formal uh method as far as what are the findings of this? What are our professional recommendations? Uh, and then being able to answer questions and get some feedback from you all. But looking at trying to accomplish that between now and I'd say April.
Thanks, Ken.
Sure.
Good question. It's Monica. Um.
Yes.
Are we at a disadvantage or is it really not? It's not, you really can't say, um. Are are you seeing with the more time that's gone on with the other projects that you're working on, the fact that we just did the one point six miles? Is that a problem for us? Or is it just make your models a little bit wonky or or not really? It's just another, we're just another project.
Yeah, the, I mean, the for for sure, the rates are higher in duck because of, um, you know, both that taper issue and the the size of the project. Um. No, no question, we're losing sand faster here. Um, i- it's just a matter of, you know, how how we can, how we can mitigate that, how we can reduce those those rates over the long term. But yeah, we're we're definitely dealing with more challenges because of the size of the project. Right. Um, all right. Well, that's all I've got as far as the two thousand and twenty-two project. I will show you a schedule here on the last slide. We're getting close. I've got a couple of slides. I want to. Give you an update on that UAS rapid beach assessment program that we've talked about uh the last year or so. Um, uh, just a little bit of background on this first slide. Essentially, we're using drones or UAS to conduct these surveys. They can be done very rapidly. You know, high resolution, low cost, time efficient. Um, you know, the logistics behind this really are that the town has its own drone. So on our end, we help um set up the flight plan, um, you know, make sure that everything's configured, provide a little bit of tech support to town staff. Town staff goes out there. They actually fly the the pre-planned uh drone uh flight paths with with the town owned drone. They bring that back and they upload that data to the cloud. We have access to it. Uh, at that point in time, we can process that data. And essentially the deliverables that come out of this are, you've got a new set of, um, you know, high high resolution orthomosaics, essentially, you know, georeference aerial photos that you can lay into your own. Townwide GISs. Um, obviously, they're they're basically covering the dry sand beach and maybe the first row or two of houses out there. But you've got these, um, you know, these updated orthomosaics. You also have the the X Y Z point clouds that can be that that can be thrown in there to create your own surfaces. Uh, and then we've got three D surfaces as well. And then basically the goal is that allows, you know, for some some more detailed observations of. Really, a- again, we're looking at dry sand above the waterline. Obviously, we showed those surveys earlier where there's a lot of, there's a lot of change that goes on below the waterline that we want to count for when we really think about project performance, but. There there are some interesting things that we can tease out of. Uh, these these drone surveys of looking at how the dunes are changing over time and really being able to provide additional information to. Property owners throughout the course of the year, especially as it's related to to these storm events. And so over the past year, um. We, the the only event that we actually did over the past year was one associated with Hurricane Teddy, I believe, that was like somewhere around October of two thousand and twenty. Um, but prior to that, the previous survey that we had dated all the way back to November nineteen. So I think the town did maybe three different events. Uh, in the summer and the winter of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, but there wasn't another survey done until October of two thousand and twenty. And so. You know, basically, what we're showing here is a comparison of the most recent two uh surveys that were done with the drone. So these are the actual georeferenced images that come from the drone. Um, and what we have here is the the November two thousand and nineteen images, the uh October two thousand and twenty images. The black line is using the data that's collected by the drone to show where that plus six foot contour is. So in reference to where the scarf line would be, you can kind of see where the plus six foot contour would be, how far out on the beach that plus six foot contour would be. Something else that kind of goes back to what the mayor had just asked was. If if this, if we're talking about constructing this part of the project. If there was a part of the dune that needed to be reconstructed in this area, you would, you know, you would basically add material to the bottom of the of the the toe of the dune to reconstruct the dune template. But if you didn't need any dune placement here, essentially, the contractor is going to start where this black line is. And be placing a dry sand beach moving seaward from this black, this black line on these images, because that's where the plus six foot contour was. At this point in time. So it's just another way of illustrating that. But. The the some of the deliverables, the hard copy deliverables we have for you all, each time we do one of these surveys is these comparisons of the last two drone in images. And then we also do a set of um, a set of maps that show essentially the change between those two data sets. So. What we're looking at here are the hot colors indicate losses of elevation. So really what you're seeing is as you move, um, you know, north, this is Buffalo Head Road, the very south end of Buffalo Head Road. As you move up Buffalo Head Road, you know, there. Comparing these two data sets, again, there wasn't a whole lot of change to the scarf there. But as you move fa- further south at the south end of Buffalo Head and uh further s- further south towards um Snow Geese. Uh, you see more of that red, a thicker red color. That's essentially the loss of the the toe of that dune. Um, you can also see how it changed where the where these walkthroughs, where the 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 town has, you know, created those walkthroughs. How some of what was created in two thousand and nineteen, um, this was. This is looking at immediately after the storm, probably prior to the town being able to get back out there and level those slopes out. So you're actually seeing the orange as as a volume loss in these particular areas. But up on top of the dune. The comparison isn't showing much of any change at all. Um, out on the dry sand beach, you know, we're not not seeing a whole lot of change out there either. Uh, but these are, these are the types of deliverables that come each time we do one of those those drone surveys. And one of the things we talked about. With Sandy, this this past go round is because, um, you know, because there wasn't a survey done between. November two thousand and nineteen and October two thousand and twenty, when the storm came up in October two thousand and twenty, there wasn't much to compare it to. So we talked about maybe timing it so that when we do our beach profile surveys in the the early summer or spring. Maybe having town staff conduct sort of a baseline uh drone survey for for that year at the same time. So that, you know, if 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 an event happens and you want to conduct another one of these, you you have something more recent to compare it to rather than. Something all the way back from the 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 prior winter. Um, all right, so getting to sort of summary slides here. Um. I- this is a schedule in terms of the two thousand and twenty-two project. So some of this you have already seen in the past. Project initiation happened last year. Uh, borrowing a development occurred over last fall and into early this winter. Uh, pretty much wrapped up with that the bar area development. At this point, we will be settling in on on uh borrow area A as we discussed. Um, the engineering design. The mayor asked a question about, um, you know, when the when those decisions need to be made. Uh, we've got an April two thousand and twenty-one. Time period here. Um, I did mention, you know, that we've already. I did mention, you know, that we've already submitted the permit applications and you kind of think, well, how, how can you submit permit applications if the design isn't finished? We've, we've basically, you know, cast a wide net of what could potentially be built in the permit application. And so we feel like that's covered. Any of the options that we might be looking at in terms of what we will, we will design. And so when we think about it in terms of design, really what we're looking at is, is to try to hone in on what we will actually include in the construction plans and specs. Because our permit application is kind of already included a, a, a larger potential beach fill out there. Getting into the permitting. Our, our, our entire schedule really is, is built around trying to solicit bids in June and July 2021. So a lot of these dates are backed into June and July 2021. You know, we, we, we feel really, really good about the federal permitting and the state permitting that. We're on track as far as submitting our applications and our documentation to have those permits in place July 2021. We'll probably start next month. We need a new contract for this, but we'll probably, and, and that, that'll be true for the surveys as well. Start the development of those construction plans and specs. Next month in March 2021. And hopefully have those completed by June 2021. And that's when we want to advertise for the construction of the project. So we're. We're working in concert with Southern Chores, Kitty Hawk and Killable Hills to have everybody on the same schedule. Have everything we need to, to submit bids for all four towns at once. In the June, July timeframe so that, you know, we can get bids back by the end of July, maybe early August. And lock a contractor in for construction of the project that'll actually occur next year in 2022. But. There's a lot of lead in time. We want to make sure we bid this project early enough to get favorable bids that we can construct the project in 2022. There's been some discussion about Dare County wanting to construct the Buxton project. Which may or may not use the same type of dredging resources that we're looking at. But they're, they're probably six to eight months behind where we are with our schedule. So I think we'll be out in front of them in terms of bidding the project. There's also some discussion about the town of Maggshead doing a smaller project than the one they did in 2017. Dealing with some, some losses that they, they had from a couple of different storms. And they're looking at, they're looking at probably. Bidding, I, I think they want to wait until after we're done bidding this out and potentially bid out the project maybe later in the fall. And, and hope that whoever the contractor is that is selected for our work, you know, will have additional capacity in 2022. To build their project as well. And maybe they get, you know, a, a discount on some of the mobilization costs, but. There, we, we've been in some discussions to the, to the degree that it will help out the other four towns. We've been in some discussions with Moffett Nickel, who is Maggshead's consultant. Trying to make sure that, that we're working together in whatever ways we can to achieve some cost savings for the, the different towns. So next steps, final slide. Next steps will be the 2021 monitoring surveys that'll be done probably. We probably want to do this a little earlier than we have in the past. A couple of years, we've done those in June. One year we did them in May. We're probably going to shoot for like the end of April, early May to try to do those surveys because. They're going to be really important at finalizing the designs for the plans and specs. So. We will, we'll probably do those surveys a little earlier. And then we, we also do the surveys for Currituck County. We'll probably flip flop them. Last year we did Currituck County first. We'll probably do those after we do the four town surveys this year. We want to finalize recommendations for the beach fill. That was what we discussed about trying to get that completed by the end of April. We want to finalize the fill volume. So once we have some recommendations to the town. We'll have to, we'll have to look at how those recommendations. You know, stack up with actual dollars and the town will have to make some determinations as to, you know, what, what size of project we want to try to put out there and how to optimize that. What to bid out. And then that goes into construction plans and specs. Additional beach sampling, I haven't really mentioned anything, but. Staff is aware Sandy and Joe have been involved in, the state has recently changed one of their sediment criteria rules. We had thought we had planned for this accordingly, when we, when we provided the scope of work last year. The, the state was talking about modifying their, their state rules. And, and so we, we went with the, the modifications they were considering last summer. We did some additional surveys out there on the beaches. And since that time, the state has again proposed a different modification to those rules. Which means that part of what we had done last summer has to be redone. However, the state in realizing that they keep moving the goalposts has actually made some funding available. To towns that are in the same boat. And so it looks like the state is going to reimburse the town for that additional beach sampling that needs to be done. There's also some discussion as we've been coordinating with the agency folks about the offshore borrow areas. Let me, let me show you one more slide here. This is, this is borrow area A. It's a zoomed in image of borrow area A. The imagery behind it is simply bathymetric data. So the, the darker those colors are. The, the, the deeper the depths are out there. The lighter the color is essentially the more sand there is out there to actually mine and, and build the project. So what, what we're looking at here is a, a good chunk of the borrow area was used during 2017 project. They did a lot of dredging from this section up in here, but when we go back and we look at what the, what the areas were permitted for back in 2017. There's still about 3 million cubic yards of sand in this particular section. The reason that there, that this isn't one solid polygon and there are these different sections of the borrow area is because each one of these sections is designed. That they can actually dredge down to a different depth. So in this box, the dredger could dredge down to minus 65 feet. Whereas in this box, the dredger could only dredge down to minus 58 and a half feet. Okay. So there's. It's a bit of an art form that goes into how you design these projects to make them very dredgable for the contractor. Here you can actually see the tracks that the, this was the last area that was dredged, but. The data is right from after the dredger's finished and you can actually see the tracks of where they were dredging. What the agencies have suggested to us is that. They, they're concerned about areas that were dredged. Is, has, has material filled into those areas that were dredged? That could potentially be incompatible material. Now, in this particular area, there, there really wouldn't be a good. Geologic explanation of why you would have incompatible material filling into these areas that were previously dredged. But the state's very particular about, you know, making sure that they've done their due diligence to make sure material that's placed on the beach is compatible. And so one of the things that we've proposed to them, they, they, they're, they're basically saying, hey, if you're going to go into areas that were not dredged, which essentially is this section. And these two sections, that, then you're okay. But if you're going to go back into this area, which looks like it still has about 2 million cubic yards or this area that still has 3 million cubic yards. We may require you to do some surveys to show that those areas have not filled in with anything. And if they did fill in with something, then you might have to take some superficial bottom samples. Not necessarily big cores that we would have to do otherwise, but some bottom samples to show that material is still compatible. And so. And so one of the things that we're in discussion with the agencies about is the potential of having to go out and do a survey of that borrow area. And provide that data to them to allow us to be able to dredge in those sections. It's something that isn't going to impact our permitting timeline. It's not something that they say they want to have ahead of time to be able to issue the permit. I think what's going to happen is they're going to issue the permit conditionally that says if you want to go into those other areas. You're going to have to show us that you've surveyed the areas and provided the, the, you know, the associated data. That shows that material has filled in or hasn't filled in. And if it has, it's compatible material. And so that's something, that's, that's a survey that would be split with all four of the towns. It would be done at the same time that our 2021 surveys are done. And we would want to have that information in hand so that we can incorporate that into the plans and specs. Because ultimately, the, the more flexibility we give the dredger, the better price we're going to get. If we're limited to only 5 million cubic yards of sand in specific cuts in the borrow site. You know, that may be one price if, if they're allowed to, to, to fan out and, and take some of that sand that's in some of those other boxes. Maybe their price is reduced a little bit. So that, that's the goal of potentially conducting that additional survey that's on there. And then finally advertising for bids, that's, that's the big goal right now that, that, you know, everything is lined up for. Trying to advertise for, for bidding the project between June and July of 2021. That's all I've got. Happy to take questions.
Any additional questions now for Ken? Ken, we appreciate it. We appreciate your time this, this morning. Very comprehensive. And we appreciate you working with the town.
Great. We, we appreciate it as well. And certainly you guys will have access to the presentation, kind of dive into it slowly. And, and if you guys have any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you again. Have a great day.
Thank you.